Move by Pat.
Second.
Seconded by Lena that the, uh, for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Okay, it's eighty-one P's and you don't have any review and comment on Route one, Route sixteen improvement? Everybody looked at it?
No, we just got it.
Larry, can you give us a overview on this?
Yeah, this, uh, this packet from the consulting engineer for the town. They're moving toward, uh, tip approval for the Route sixteen project reconstruction of Main Street from Water Street to the Hope Dale Town Line. You go in about two pages past the aerial photo where it says proposed improvements, uh, you'll see that it would be widening the entire stretch of road, improving the intersection at Route one forty, uh, an entirely new signal. You'd have, uh, right through and left turns approaching the intersection on each leg. There'd be advanced, uh, left green arrows that way for all the traffic on, on every approach. So that'll make a noticeable difference in how traffic flows through Milford. Well, actually, traffic will be able to flow through Milford after that. So I was assuming that you would wanna have me put together a favorable letter, uh, and send it off in time for them to put their packet together to, uh, Mass Highway.
I don't understand how... Where's the, where's the parking going, Larry? Because it's parking allowed on all sides. We, we now making that no, because otherwise the cross-section doesn't seem to work out here.
It'd just be on site, though.
You're saying, well, any on-street parking, depending on where you are, may have to go, yeah?
Well, apparently, they're saying all of on-street parking is gonna go.
I don't think that that's advisable.
You've got twelve-foot lanes and a, and a five-foot bike lane. That's seventeen, uh, thirty, that's thirty-four feet. And we've got a thirty-two-foot wide pavement section now. It's gonna be a little bit difficult.
I thought they were going with, uh, eleven-foot, uh...
Thirty-two and a thirty, and a thirty-two-foot wide means all the parking goes. I don't think that's advisable.
There's also, um, business on that side of the street that uses the parking area.
There's a few places they use.
On the street, yeah.
There's many.
There are, there are, yeah, there are a few of them.
People's houses.
It, it as well as residents, yes.
Right, right.
I don't think it's advisable to eliminate all the off-street parking.
Well, the problem is, I, I'm not sure, again, if you put a bike lane in, I don't know how you're gonna get around it.
Yeah, you can't park in the bike lane.
No.
The sidewalk on both sides.
Yeah, but you can't ride the bike.
No, I know, I'm just saying, so you're saying still the sidewalk on both sides, besides?
Yeah. Down there, you can't get, I don't know what the layout is, doesn't say what the layout is.
If it's sixty foot layout, they're gonna do everything.
Well, the last, the last page, uh, has the roadway cross-section as the first paragraph. So you've got eleven-foot travel lanes, uh, five-foot paved shoulders, six-foot sidewalks.
Yeah, which, there's no parking there.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't think there's been much thought put into that.
Is the bicycle lane taking up the parking space there? Is that what?
Now, yes.
It, it is now, yes.
According to this, yeah, because if you go down there and there's somebody parked there, you have to go over into the other side because it's not, it's not wide enough with the center. So when somebody's parking, you're, you're past the median of the roadway.
But, but when, when the, um, people come to buy certain things, you know, at the store, where are they gonna park? Because I don't think there's any parking behind any of the stores. Frank's Appliance, I, I don't know.
Frank's has parking.
Does he have a big, does he have a, a good-sized parking behind there?
Yes.
Frank, they certainly have parking.
The place that doesn't is, the one is, uh...
Barber shop now that used to be...
Barber shop doesn't have any. Tony's Place, that doesn't have any.
Yeah, it used to be the restaurant, it used to be Tony's, that has nothing there.
Excuse me?
Even the park right there.
That's right, right.
I know, great that you can park on Fruit Street, however, it's, I don't think it's advisable to eliminate all the parking.
Well, I don't think we can, I don't think we can just tell somebody to go ahead without looking at the parking, to be, to be honest. I think it's, you know, when we take this to the business community, whatever is left down there, I think, I, you know, I think it's not the, uh, well, at least taking a look at it and making sure that all of those businesses have other places to park is something that I would go ahead and just say, yeah, let's go ahead and do this. I understand Scotts needs to have the road done, but I don't think you can just make these kind of changes without having comments from the businesses down there.
I also think that there's, there's a handful of residents who also routinely park on the road.
Oh, I'm sure they do.
I think it's just short-sighted if we're not taking into consideration their own needs.
Right.
So I think you need to do a little more investigation.
So is there, is there anything positive you can say about...
I think the widening of the intersection was positive. With, with, with dedicated turning lanes, absolutely.
With, with the caution of, uh, about the parking.
As long as they don't take away the right-hand turn signals, I mean, they right-hand turn too often.
No, they'd be adding.
But up in that, up in that general intersection, there wasn't any parking in any house, so that wasn't a real big consideration.
There's no right-hand to the hospital.
There's no signal.
They're not, they're not signed, they're not marked for that, those are all single lanes up there.
People just take that.
But you can take, if I'm growing up, you can take a right-hand, you can right take a right-hand.
You can, but there's not a...
Coming down one forty, you can take a right-hand going to Soapdale.
Yeah.
Coming up from Milford, you can take a right-hand going onto one forty.
Yeah, but only, only if you...
Only if somebody pulls over.
Yeah, well, I mean, I understand that, but to the other side, you can't take them along, there's a sign-up because you can't see, you've got no vision, sight vision with the, uh...
So that's not gonna happen then. Are they gonna have a right-hand turn lane?
Well, unless you're the first car there, it's the only, it's the only thing that, it's the only thing that, that makes you able to go.
Yeah.
Because there's no widening on the right turn lane in order to get cars past the cars going straight.
Well...
But there's no reason, in this case, it's a single...
Well, they're gonna have...
A single lane, there's no reason why you can't do a right turn on red if you're the first car in that, they, they shouldn't have to mark it off.
I do that.
Well, they, they were talking about doing...
They're gonna do four lanes.
Four lanes.
Four lanes, yeah, that's what it says.
Yeah, they're gonna do a left turn lane, a, a straight through in both directions.
And a right. That's what it says. You have, you have three approach lanes and one coming-through lane.
They got enough room to do that? Has anybody looked at that?
That's six, that's six lanes.
Did someone, did someone call Doc bottle out or they think in his house?
It's four, four lanes, four lanes.
So they're gonna do left-hand turn lanes.
What made all this?
There's no room for four.
I, I perceive the four left, there's, there's a left at each intersection and a drive-through. I consider that, I, I, maybe I'm mis...
It's two.
I'm assuming it's only two, I'm not saying that there's...
That's why, that's how I read it.
Unless you're reading it differently than, but that was my impression of what they were doing. Correct.
Two each way, yeah, two each way.
No, no.
Straight, correct, correct. That's how I perceived it.
Yeah.
They, they actually do that now.
Four left turns, one in each approach will be added, yeah, that, I'm reading it that you're adding four lanes.
Proposed improvements, it says right there, four left turn lanes.
So, because it's...
One at each approach.
That's, that's gonna be taking a lot of property.
Yeah.
One lane is gonna take property. Especially across the street.
But if you can get, if you can get that through, I mean, it'll be interesting to see how much, how much property they take.
How time-sensitive is this?
Uh, he, he didn't...
Yeah, he needs it back soon, so I could put some, a general letter together that addresses all of this.
When is it soon?
Thirty seconds to look at it and then say, yeah, make up your mind.
Should've looked the, uh, I think, I think it's talking about putting a light down there in Green Street.
Well, it's... That's different, the light's not gonna make any difference at that intersection.
No, I'm just saying, but if that, if that was the case, you might wanna almost lump it all in.
No, this, this is separate.
Well, I think you need to get, I think you need to get clarification on the parking. I, I think that that's, uh...
Well, that can be part of the recommendation.
Right. I think a letter should be sent to Christopher Lee. Stating that.
Well, that's...
I guess my problem is, why are we making a recommendation if we're looking for more data? I guess it's a fundamentally ridiculous question.
Just to send him a letter.
Well, they wanna comment, so that's...
But my comment is, I think, I think we need, yes, we, we need to, we need to better understand the elimination of the parking before we can fully comment. I think that's...
Well, that's, I can say that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I got that the first time around.
Okay.
So we'll expect to see something back, I guess, is my...
What else, what else is, we got a blinking signal at Fruit?
Yeah.
Hmm?
No, there's not the...
There's no signal at Fruit.
There's no other, there's no other...
There's a stop sign, that's it.
No.
The blinking signal is down South Rain and Fruit.
So there's no other, there's no other signals along this stretch.
Is that still there by your home?
Oh, yes, and they've made it, they've made it brighter.
They made it brighter, they still go through.
Yeah, it's got the, yeah, it's got the...
It's got that flash of silver strobe, uh, that goes through it.
You know what they could use? A sign that warns you the stop signs.
They do have that.
Yeah.
They have it in the middle of Fruit Street Extension.
Larry, you're gonna put down...
And they have it, and they have it, and they have it coming up.
I need some more time, and we have a question on what the parking is.
When you're coming from, uh, the Dallas area, there's a big yellow sign.
Okay, uh, let's go with, uh...
It went through the guy's fence, just...
Rogerio, Joseph Rogerio.
Okay.
Bob?
Thank you. This is, this is the, um, the site that's opposite Fish Mill Road and West Street. Currently, there is a, um, building back in here that's Harry O's building, he used to have his business back in here. There's also, um, a building here that used to be a, a daycare, which is, I think, is vacant right now. This subdivision, this plan was created in, in this manner sometime ago to, to be able to access this and, and this building over here to meet all the requirements of the site plan review process. And this lot was, is a separate lot. The applicant is proposing to take the, the half of this back building here and use it as an auto detailing shop. Needs a special permit for that. Uh, there'll be no mechanical work done onsite at all, it's just gonna be detailing of, of vehicles. And the only change that we made in order to, um, comply with the requirements of the site plan was to add a handicap space here and, and put another space along in here where there, you know, where there really wasn't anything before. We made a, we created a handicap space. We meet all the requirements for the entire development as far as all the parking requirements, and this, as a standalone lot, meets all the requirements for parking. So we're just looking for a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for the special permit to allow the, um, auto detailing shop in an existing building.
Larry, Larry recommends a favorable report.
Yep.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course you can.
Am I to assume that, um, if he's successful at the zoning board, that the next step will be that he comes back and say that he wants a, uh, you know...
Sales company.
Yeah, to be able to sell cars next, I mean, it's...
No, he doesn't wanna...
I don't think so, no.
He's gotta come back for site plan, that's all right.
We've also had, historically, that they, they can't stay in business because you can't keep an un, you know, an unregistered car there and...
No, we changed the bylaws, so we can.
All right, so that's okay.
We can have unregistered vehicles, he doesn't have to have a Class II to have unregistered vehicles.
Perfect.
We fixed that a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago.
Any other comments from the board? What's the...
I move for a favorable rec, report before...
Certainly.
Because they have to come back anymore.
For site plan, yes.
The move, do we have, you send a favorable report for the special permit to the zoning board, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Okay. We got a, uh, ZBA variance for one forty-eight, one fifty's Main Street, O'Reilly's Auto Parts. You're good to go.
Thank you. I am John Corley, professional engineer with Fuller Engineering. Do you want me to read through all he's setting up?
Go ahead.
Uh, the applicant requests a ZBA variance, or ZBA variances to construct a seven thousand square foot commercial building at one fifty East Main Street. Proposed use will be retail wholesale auto parts store and associated parking. The house at seven Free Street is to be razed with this proposal. The property is a corner lot with a front yard required along each adjacent street, thus there are three front yards with one side yard as, as a corner lot, there are no rear yards. Uh, the intersection of Hamilton and Free Streets with East Main Street, uh, the intersections are only hundred and twenty-five feet apart, and the two side streets are not parallel, further constraining the subject property. Specifically, the following variances are sought. A fifteen-foot setback from both Free and Hamilton Streets where twenty-five feet's required, uh, eight point eight feet, uh, trash enclosure setback from Hamilton Street, twenty-five feet required, uh, twenty-five point six percent maximum building coverage where only twenty-five percents allowed, maximum allowed. Reduce paving requirements to three-inch asphalt paving on a standard duty areas where four inches is required, and reduce the paving requirement to three and a half inch asphalt paving on heavy duty areas, uh, four inches is required. Due to the size and shape of the property and the unusually close proximity of the intersecting streets, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. And they, if they get the variances, they have to come back through planning, through the board for a site plan approval. Take it.
Summed it up pretty well. Um, I'll just, I'll just walk through the site plan. Are you all generally familiar with the location? Okay.
Yep.
So we have Hamilton, East Main and Free, um, and as was stated, there's twenty-five-foot front yard setbacks to all three of those frontages, um, which is unique to this lot as it relates to the surrounding zoning district. I don't think there's too many that are on such a narrow lot, um, with, you know, that odd shape, um, in the district. So we're proposing, uh, a seven thousand square foot O'Reilly Auto Parts, Parts Store. They're, uh, making a big push to come into New England. Uh, they would like very much to be here in Milford. They have identified that this size store is all that they can construct to be a viable operation and to service, uh, the needs of the community in terms of providing, uh, auto parts, both to retail, um, you and I can go in there and, and buy auto parts, but they also service dealers in the area, um, which is, this rear door here is primarily for preferred dealer, um, folks to come and pick up the parts that they've had on order. And it's just, it, it allows them to get in and pick up items pretty quickly. So the areas where we're, uh, encroaching on the twenty-five, as was mentioned, was the, the front corner here, um, and then where, this is a fifteen-foot proposed setback along the side here and right there where the trash enclosure is located. We have maintained a pretty good-sized landscape buffer and are proposing a fence along the rear property line to help screen commercial use from, uh, a budding residential. And we are showing, you know, access circulation through the site with double-loaded parking spaces out front, uh, and a single string of parking behind with the ADA spaces located adjacent to the front entrance. I'm happy to go through the rest of the application in terms of the criteria, whatever you would like me to do at this point, or answer any questions you might have.
Okay, uh, do we have any...
No, it's, uh, ZBA.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, ZBA.
That's right, I'm jumping ahead. Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess I got a couple.
Go ahead.
I have no issue with the setbacks because of the uniqueness. I, I, I have no reason to think that one, especially the, uh, the building coverage as to why we would wanna waive that. That has nothing to do with the uniqueness of this lot. It has something to do with the fact that somebody's trying to put something that's much bigger than should go into here, into here. So I understand that it's twenty-five point six and we require twenty-five, but I have no reason to think that we can't make it meet twenty-five. In terms of the pavement reduction, we, we changed those because, because of the degradation in parking lots in, in numerous places that was going on. So his, his reading that says it won't, it won't harm people going forward makes absolutely zero sense to me. So to send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA for those, those reasons is, is against everything that we've done over the past few years, and there's no way that I could support any of those.
I just, I have one other quick follow-up question. For the, I guess I'm gonna call it the commercial use to, in the back of the building, you, I think you said pervert vendors.
Mm-hmm.
Is it necessary to have an opening on Free Street? I understand, obviously, you're looking for them to exit easily, but I'm just curious how, hmm? You have to?
If you don't have an exit for the back, if you don't have an exit, you only can go one way out, Hamilton.
Yeah, the truck, the, the truck, uh, circulation goes in that way and out the other way, yeah. In fact, that's why you...
Hamilton's only one way.
Yeah. That's why you see, that's why you see this extra area that's not curbed off, it's, it's striped, yeah, for the...
I neglected to remember that Hamilton was only one way.
Yep. It's one-way north.
Parking, where, where are people gonna park?
Up front.
Because that's pretty...
Turn the page.
Well, parking is...
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
Looking around at the parking, uh...
I see it now.
Yeah, you may recall the last site plan you approved for this site was a much smaller building that, that met all the setback requirements, and the problem had been with that, and the reason it wasn't built, obviously, is it was too small.
No, but unfortunately, that, that, you know, the property's the property, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't create this, and, and to me, person knew what he had when he bought it. You know, you don't come and ask for a variance. And if the site is too, too small for O'Reilly's, then well power to them, let them find a bigger site, but, you know, they, they shouldn't be here if that's the case. If they can't make that building ninety-eight, in which case I think you would then meet the thing, they can't live with a ninety-eight-foot-long building, then you know what? This isn't the right site for them.
Well, two feet get it down to twenty-five percent.
I'm not, I'm not sure of the exact number, I was just told that they need their seven thousand, and that's why we're here for an advisory opinion before submitting full site plans.
Well, you're not technically here for an advisory as much as you're going to the zoning board, so that's...
Yeah, you need a referral.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But...
Take a, for, again, we, we just give a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
They do what they wanna do, it's their, it's their thing.
My, my, my only point in saying that was, O'Reilly's specifically asked us to phase the development of plans to not fully invest an entire set of site design documents that would be ready for you folks.
No, but understanding that if you're successful with the zoning board, then your next step would, so I mean...
Yes.
Joe, make a motion.
Make a motion that we send a favorable recommendation for the setbacks from Free Street and Hamilton Street, but that we make a unfavorable recommendation on the other requests and strongly word the, um, the requests for items C, D, and E, that, that there, there is nothing unique about this particular, um, parcel that, that makes it impossible for the applicant to meet those requirements.
Okay, A and Bs.
No, no, no.
A, A is acceptable, I, I understand the uniqueness of the property and I'm not, and I, and I think...
And be along with it.
B, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I, I don't, we'd have to take a real hard look at B to me, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't know, there's no place that they can put the, the, uh, trash enclosure, it wouldn't be twenty-five feet away. I mean, I think they put it at a place that they were comfortable with, but I'm not sure that's the...
I gotta be honest with you, Joe, I'd much rather it be where it is than it, than to the rear of the property where an actual home exists. So I guess I'm more comfortable with where it is opposed to the alternative.
We'll, we'll be able to screen that pretty well still where it's shown there, and it'll, you know, it'll be a good-looking.
And again, I'm less concerned because it's not a food or, you know, food service type of industry. I'm assuming that the composition of their trash is, is, is gonna be limited to...
Well, yeah, it would assume...
...parts and so on and so forth.
Yeah, it's trash, not garbage.
Correct. I'm not as, I'm not as adverse to, to be, certainly C, D, and E, I'm...
Do we have a second?
Me, okay.
Seconded by John Cook. Any other, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move him right along.
Okay, you got a variance, special permit, twenty-one West Brook Street. Larry?
The applicant requests ZBA special permit and variances to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling on the subject property. The additional will consist of an eighteen-by-twenty-four-foot attached garage with a ten-foot-by-twelve-foot connecting breezeway. A small five-foot-by-eight-foot kitchen addition is also proposed. The existing, uh, detached garage, twelve-by-sixteen-foot detached garage is to be razed. The property is an undersized four thousand square foot corner lot with a front yard requirement along each adjacent street, thus there are two front yards and two side yards as corner lots have no rear yards. The existing house is non-conforming as to front yard setback requirements. Specifically, the following variances are required. Seventeen-foot building, uh, setback for the attached garage from Overly Street or Overly Ave where twenty-five foot's required. A three-foot building setback, again, on the attached garage from the north side property line where ten foot's required. A nine-foot setback, uh, for the attached garage, again, uh, from the west side property line where ten feet's required. A nine-foot, uh, setback for the kitchen addition, uh, from the west side property line where ten foot's required, and thirty-two percent building coverage proposed where only twenty-five foot's allowed. Due to the small size of the property, I recommend a favorable report be forwarded to the ZBA. There is, uh... I guess it's the last, it's the last sheet, it's the site plan.
Something to be said about mansionization of the lot on this one, though.
Yeah, I mean, four thousand square feet is...
Yeah, but...
I understand that the new garage is better than the old garage, considering that the old garage looks like it could be on the neighbor's property, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I understand, I understand this is better than what was there, but, but again, we, we go to, okay, so we're gonna make that better, so let's, let's, let's make this have sixty-four non-conforming issues. And let, let's go to a bigger area, uh, do we need the mudroom? Well, let's make the mudroom even bigger than what we had before.
Yeah, I see.
Joe, I'm with you, I, I don't find the need for that proposed five-by-eight kitchen, I think it's, you know, it just, it's, I, I, I think, I think now it's just, you know, let's, let's throw everything at the dot board.
This was, this was a small house on a small lot that happened to have a non-conforming garage. Now we're making it a big house on a small lot and having a whole bunch of non-conforming issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly, they could, they could, uh, keep the garage further from the north line by not doing the breezeway.
Yep.
Uh, or even reducing the size of both the garage and the breezeway because it's a, still a single-car garage, uh, even, even when they're done with it. And it was my understanding that it's to be a, a two-story building, or at least it'll have a, an attic above, attic area.
Yeah, it says, it says they want, they want a rec room above.
Above, yeah.
They're gonna build it for that, so I mean, you know, again, make a motion, we send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board...
I'll second that one, on all chords.
The move is second, we send an unfavorable recommendation to the zoning board. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of five.
Here's the packet on that. Number seven, it's a ZBA variance for 27 Haven Street. The applicant requests, uh, variances to subdivide the subject property to create two single-family lots. Currently, the property consists of one single-family dwelling on a three-acre lot. Specifically, the following variances are required. 110.9 foot lot frontage, lot 31A, uh, 120 foot is required, uh, 105.78 feet lot width for proposed lot 31A where 140 feet's required, 124.83 lot width for proposed lot 31B where 140's required. The proposed lot split, lot split, say that fast three times, uh, would result in two single-family lots with the existing house remaining on proposed lot 31B. Both proposed lots would exceed the 45,000 square foot minimum lot size and comply with the shape factor requirements. I recommend a favorable report.
Take it, Bob.
Okay, um, so this particular piece of property is off of Haven Street, and it was, the lot was created in 1959 prior to zoning requirements, yeah, well, we tried the, the new zone, the current zoning. At the time, um, required frontage was 120 feet, there was no width requirement at the setback. So, Mr., Mr. Spindell purchased this property with the, um, intent of some point subdividing it into two lots, building, so he built the house for himself, he built it such that it was in, that he could divide the lot so that you had 120 feet of frontage, 120 feet of frontage, and both lots would have significant area because there's, there's, there's three acres here. In the 60s, in 495 went in, they, not knowing whether or not they were gonna have an on-ramp where Haven Street crossed under, they did a taking and they widened Haven Street and they did this taking Haven Street, and this, this area that you see here, they took this area from this particular property. In doing so, the, the frontage now was reduced, you know, they didn't have 240 feet of frontage anymore. So he had less than the 240 feet of frontage, less than the required 120 for each lot. Then the, um, but he, he, he had this house, this is an existing house, so he's recently passed away, left the property to his two daughters, Kathleen Hearn and Teresa Spindell. One of them is going to occupy the existing house, the other one is gonna build a house for herself on the additional lot. So, we're creating two lots, they both have in excess of an acre of land. As Larry said, the, um, the frontage is, is, we're like nine, we're 9.1 feet short of frontage on this lot. This lot complies, this, uh, lot 31B complies with the frontage requirement, but does not comply with the width requirement at the setback. And it's got all the area and meets on the, and the house meets the setbacks, so there would be nothing, no variance request on this other than the width at the setback. The second lot that's being created is short the frontage by 9.1 feet, and obviously, here again, we do not meet the width requirement, the width is only 105.78 feet at the setback. But it has sufficient area and a house can fit within the setback lines and it meets the rule of 22. So, we're, we're, you know, as I say, we're, we're just trying to be able to fulfill the intent, the intent of Mr. Spindell when he purchased the property to be able to have two lots for his daughters, whenever, you know, he could do that for them. Um, and because he lost this, he can't comply with the frontage, and at the time, there was no width requirement when the, when the property was, was the lots were made. Sit.
No, this is, I've, I've been taking the property as a hardship.
It is a hardship, I agree.
I only have, I only have one.
Yes, Joe.
Uh, i- if we grant it, I, I believe that we should require them to move the shed so that it's either moved or, or taken down so that it meets the setback requirement.
The shed here, yeah, fine.
Well, I, that's me, I have no idea what the rest of the board says, but I'm just saying that I, I don't see, it meets everything else other than the frontage requirements, why, why have a non-conformance out there, or, or, someone's coming back when they look at it to realize that they've got a non-conformity that they haven't asked for, and I'm saying that one, we don't need to, to grant, because I don't think it's even half the setback distance, so I don't think it would meet the, if that's less than 100 square feet or 120, I don't think, I, I still don't think it meets it.
It doesn't, even if, even if you don't, even if you don't split the lots, it doesn't meet.
It doesn't meet, right, well, so I'm just saying that that's, that's part of this, if we grant them two lots, that, that my feeling is that we should require them to move the shed or, or take it down, whichever.
It's about, it's about a 200 square foot shed.
Yeah, so it.
So the half, half the distance doesn't apply anyway.
No, half the distance doesn't, doesn't apply, so I say, I, my, my motion is to send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board for the, uh, the granting of the waiver, however, that the waiver should be subject to the, the moving or removal of the shed on lot 31B. So that it, they don't come back and ask for an additional waiver.
Second by Sina.
I see, I do that.
Now that, that is a compliment, and an honor, absolutely.
Second by Lena.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
I'm opposed.
You are, no, you are.
I don't necessar, I'm not suggesting your story is flawed, but at any time, he could have subdivided those and he had, would've had a much easier chance when they took the property from him, but I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think that, no, I, I don't see it.
Look, look how far back.
Who is favorite, one opposed?
You know, I mean, things were going on, 495.
And if that was maybe.
Watching me, uh.
I gave it to you, there's no.
You could've done it at any point.
I took it off.
He took it back.
Did you motion to, uh?
I made a motion to, uh.
Second.
Yeah, to adjourn.
Second, all, second, uh, John, uh, Lena, all those in favor of adjourned? Opposed, unanimous?